Greetings, everybody. Welcome to the Conquest School Board City and Community Relations Committee meeting. It's kind of nice to see a full house, but we have a big topic on the agenda. So committee members present are myself, Sarah Sodowsky, and Liz Boucher. Absent tonight is Jess Campbell. And other board members, Jim Richards, Brenda Hastings, Pam Walsh are joining in as well, as well as a number of people from the school district and from Parks and Rec. Ready to prepare, I'm ready to present our work thus far on the master planning for Memorial Field. So David Gill will do most of the talking initially tonight, and we encourage board members and committee members to ask questions as we go along. So without further ado, Mr. Gill, welcome, welcome to the board.
Greetings, welcome, everybody. Thank you for inviting us. To my left is Eric, he's with VHB, he's one of the consultants, and Chris from Hunter Sports is another one of our consultants. So we're gonna kind of break it into three. They have their own tech specialties, so we'll talk about them. This has been a multi-year process. Two thousand and three, we started this. To be honest, the first time in my career, the city and the school district got together and formally talked about Memorial Field and actually funded this phase. So I thought that was an awesome first step. We've got this conversation going, so I appreciate you guys' support in making that happen. Real quick, history of the Memorial Field. Nineteen twenty-six was the first donated area. Over time, we've acquired it, it's now thirty-six acres. The first football game was nineteen thirty-three. Baseball field opened in nineteen thirty-six. First football game was nineteen forty-five with lights, with portable lights, and unfortunately, we're back to portable lights. So I think the history is important. Back in the early seventies, we went through a master plan process. Was a destination for most of the state athletic sports, Division One, Division Two had their finals here. We still have a couple of Division Two and Division Three, NHI finals for baseball and tennis, but it's not like it used to be. This is how it is made up today. Couple of the fields are multi-sports in the sense that diversity soccer is also diversity with crossfield. Baseball is baseball, softball A is softball A, softball B in the lower right is also soccer field in the fall, as well as practice locations potentially for lacrosse. The football field is football field and the back football field. I think the other thing to remember, when most of this improvements were done in the early seventies, it did not anticipate the sports of today. So the rectangular fields on both of the football fields is not large enough for soccer. Very barely large enough for soccer, it's not large enough for lacrosse. Lacrosse is one of the, girls lacrosse is actually the biggest field that we would have, which is, which is awesome, but it does not fit on the fields that we have today, those Current site, I think it's pretty obvious. Needs a lot of work, a lot of deferred maintenance. Already discussed the fields. When the track is used, the indoor, the grass field inside can't be used for all the sports. The track needs to be replaced. Conquest School District's already not using the track starting in the spring of two thousand and twenty-six. We have major site drainage. When it rains more than inch, inch and a half, the back area, mainly the baseball, the softball, the back football field's underwater. The drainage system's failed. ADA challenges, parking challenges, I think the list goes on. Bleachers are needed to repair. These are some of the pictures of some of the water issues we've had over the years. A couple of years ago, we did start digging up some of the nineteen seventy-one drainage pipe, thinking, hey, if some of the things clogged, is that the issue? The answer is yes, all of it. Also, a lot of the drainage is not built to today's standards. There's no, soap fell around it, so the mud and the stuff, the soap doesn't get in. Most of the water issues is actually where the nineteen seventies expansion happened. Cornfield or cow pasture, it's underwater a lot. That area in the picture in red is about a foot, foot and a half lower than the football field. So it sits in a bowl, Fruit Street, everything kind of drains into this area. And then we have some issues with the frosts. Most of that is the drainage lines that prevents a field opening on time. So like I mentioned earlier, June two thousand and twenty-three, we formed a funded project. We had two public meetings in total, there was about two hundred folks in attendance. We also met with the students at the middle school and the high school, trying to get their input of what they would like for an athletic facility. Obviously, the students, athletes have played in other Division One complexes that are a lot nicer than Memorial Field. So had a lot of good plans and good ideas of what Memorial Field should look like. Community sessions, I think reinforce what we already knew. Drainage, parking, improve the fields, improve the lights, increase accessibility, bleachers, a track, you know, conversation about how to bring the field hockey back to the campus. Field hockey's played at Rollins Park, Rollins Park is designed as a baseball, softball community park. The field is off-site and the field at times is not the best. Add a new athletic field outside the track, just to have concurrent use, just to increase the possible opportunities. Locker rooms and updated bathrooms. That was the athletes asked for locker rooms, so we did come up with a plan that has four separate locker rooms, bathroom facility concessions. And then we'll get into the phasing aspect of this, that could, that's something that could be done last, one of the most expensive pieces, but it could be done last. You know, the, the goal was to keep the walking trails there, keep cross-country ski trails so we get the twelve months out of the year. And then there's a desire to have artificial turf fields, so that's kind of what we heard. Turn it over to Eric to talk about some of the site constraints and some of the opportunities.
Thanks, David. My name is Eric Girard, I'm a civil engineer, I'm the Director of Land Development for VHB in our Bedford, New Hampshire office. And we were, we were setting off the master plan by just understanding the property and really diving in. And to do that, we need to do existing conditions, site survey, understand the property limits, elevations out there with topography. We had our wetland scientists go out to understand the natural resources and those constraints with the wetlands that are primarily around the westerly, southwesterly boundary And then really diving in, understanding those buffer zones, the topo. And we also engaged with SW Cole, our geotechnical partner, to understand what's going on under the, the surface with the soils, with all the issues with the drainage and understanding why, why isn't it properly draining and what are, what are those items that we're up against? So really, you know, it's a very constrained site once you start looking at all the pieces, especially with, let's try not to lose any of the program out there when we start looking, moving around some of the pieces and how are we gonna fix it moving forward. So we also considered parking, understanding that parking's a major concern, and really seeing what's available out on the, in the vicinity that is being used for the fields. The parking lot on the site currently has about a hundred and twenty-four spaces, that's that red box in the middle, which is pretty underserved for the amount of fields that are out there today. On-street parking, there's an additional hundred and thirty-six, those are the green up along Fruit Street. Some of them aren't necessarily probably the safest or really striped for parking, but people do park there. And then in addition, the orange you see is available lots when, when the state offices are not technically in session, so after hours and stuff like that. So overall, there's about four hundred and fifty total parking spaces in and around the Memorial Field area.
Turn it over to Chris.
Good evening, I'm Chris Huntress with Hunter Sports. So when we were, when we started this process, we started looking at, you know, how we could improve Memorial Field and, you know, the initial discussion beyond the larger, kind of broader discussion of ADA and accessibility centered around the track and field and parking, and how we might either work our way incrementally through an improvement process, or whether we would do the whole thing in, in, in one project. So this was option A that was originally developed back in two thousand and twenty-four, had a new eight-lane, four-hundred-meter track. We did put a new multipurpose synthetic turf field in the center, right where the tennis courts are presently. Because in the listening sessions that we had back in late two thousand and twenty-three, there was a desire to maintain a competition field with, with a significant amount of seating, which I would say is two thousand, that's what we show here. It's, it's what you have on your track now. But they didn't feel that that amount of seating was necessary at the, at the new track, but they did want a competition field that was not bounded or surrounded by a four-hundred meter track. So that's why we showed the one in the central location of the, of the site where tennis was. We moved tennis down to the southwest corner and improved baseball and softball where they were. This, we had some improvement, the parking on site, went from the hundred and twenty-four spaces that Eric had mentioned earlier to approximately a hundred and eighty with what I would consider more modest improvements to the existing parking. From here, we grew this plan. I don't know, we'll talk about the first. So one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we could do as we looked at this plan was if we implemented Phase One, which at this time would have been parking improvements in the track and field, we didn't, we wanted to make sure that we didn't prohibit ourselves from going forward with other improvements later on down the road. So we wanted to do it thoughtfully. So this would have been at that time, you know, Phase One approach, looking at the track and field with a seven hundred and fifty-seat grandstand and the improvements on, on parking. And then really, at the same time, we'd be working the lower field to start the drainage improvements. There are some off-site improvements that you need, thank you. Shown down along the southwest boundary, you'll see that kind of blue rectangle down there, that's the, the block culvert that's actually off-site, but we know we need to clear that, and that will help, but then we need to add drainage and other improvements. You do have a significant amount, as David walked you through, a significant amount of drainage on the site now that was installed in the seventies. And it wasn't installed wrong, I don't want you to think that you made, you know, a wrong investment, just drainage doesn't last forever. It needs to be maintained or rebuilt, and you know, we're fifty years beyond that now, so it's, it's at a time when it's ready to be reconstructed and improved.
Do you want me to touch that? So, so also, the colors there are showing, bringing that grade up for fill, and primarily that's to get in that proper drainage system, be able to outlet those pipes down to the bottom in the existing wetlands that are out there. The pipes out there today are essentially already underwater, so that's why they're not really flowing that well. And then that, that larger blue piece on the bottom is the culvert that's just off the property and that's currently collapsed. It's a pretty large thirty-six-inch culvert, so all the, the heavy storm events, that, that's really restricting the flow. So that would be kind of number one, we'd want to get fixed. And that, that would help on those larger storm events to prevent kind of that backup and immediate flooding that you're experiencing out on those lower fields to help get that water out a little quicker.
And one of the questions that I've been asked is, you know, how much fill do you have to bring in and will it work? And Barbara probably remembers this, White Park.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna give this example.
White Park, you used to come into the park and drive down about eight to ten feet. Back in two thousand and eight, we filled the park, it was somewhere between four and ten feet of sand and then the ground, and then soil on top. So now, when you look at the park, it's all level, but four used to be down and, and in. So I think it's, you know, using twenty-first century technology and the ability to put in proper design and proper drainage, it does work.
Well, and the biggest noticeable difference for, for me is the baseball field at White's. You know, that used to be a home for ducks every spring as well.
It used to be not playable.
Yeah, and then, and then, and then where the parking lot is now was a Little League field, and again, it was just a pond. And raising it all up and making it level, that doesn't exist at all anymore.
No.
Yeah.
So projected expanses, option A, we're calling it. Both option A and option D, which we'll present next. Final design and permit is one point two million dollars. That's basically to get construction documents, get all the permits in place. That would be the next phase if the city and the school district wanted to move forward. That would be the phase, the conversation, the coffee start there. Some of the phasing constructions, like Chris said, is, you know, it was a track in the field, it was a drainage, and the natural grass drainage, that's that Phase One A and Phase One B, all in is eight point four million. And then obviously, at later stages, if, depending what we wanted to do, you, we can add those in later phases as funding becomes available. It's interesting, the budget costs, small print down there, and we are continuing to carry ten percent contingency. In the next phase, we use it like, try to get that down to about five percent. So there is some, some fine tuning we have to, have to continue to do. There's been a lot of conversation, is it twenty-seven point four million the real number? Is it high? Is it, at this point, it is, this is a master plan, this is like a fifty thousand-foot level. The next phase, if we get funding, we get to that thirty percent or forty percent design is when we're gonna send it back out, we'll get concrete numbers, because we don't know the final grade, we don't know how much fill, we don't know the size of the piping we need. I should, went all through this in middle school, that would be the next phase. Very familiar. So fast forward to my, this year, City Council, the School Board created a joint subcommittee just to look at the Memorial Field project, how to move this project forward. Two members from City Council, Council of Foot, Council of Fitnessing, two School Board members, Higgins and Richards. So we totally had seven meetings over like five and a half months, it seems like, six months. Couple of goals were there to ensure the master plan addressed, you know, overall drainage, proposed fields, best location. The subcommittee did start off with saying, hey, do we, let's come up with a plan that might not have all the amenities there. So the Little League field, you'll see, is not supposed to kept in this, at Memorial Field, so if that gets moved, the city would have to work with the Little League to find a replacement field. On-site parking, ADA, how do you create a master plan to build the phases? Highlights of what, what they did, they updated the existing parking layout, a hundred and eighty more additional parking spaces. You'll see in the next couple of slides, they moved the track, they added two artificial turf fields, a grass field in between the two artificial fields. I did give a copy of this PowerPoint to Jack, so he can share it with everybody if they're taking notes and look at the numbers. The baseball field is rebuilt, it is rebuilt in the correct orientation, new maintenance building, space for staff, storage, equipment, concessions, bathrooms. The subcommittee also made a recommendation to, and expressed support to have the city look at buying the fields to the west of Memorial Field, those are the cornfields. The committee, the subcommittee felt that would be a great location for additional site parking in the future, even though they've added a hundred and eighty on-street parking, I mean, in the park, is not adequate long-term, so it's more of planting the seed to go forward. So turn it over to Chris.
Let me walk you through this option D, which has been developed over the course of the last year, as David had said. This makes a couple of big moves. One is, its first move is to not make a move, it leaves tennis where it is, it leaves that investment in place, tennis and basketball where they presently are. It takes your track and field and moves it to page right, which is kind of in the southwest corner of the field, or west corner of the park. It would require some elevation change down there to lift that up and get that track to a point where it's level. It takes baseball reoriented towards the northeast, which is a preferred orientation in, in New England. Then along that southern boundary, you've got those two multipurpose fields. One with a two thousand seat grandstand, that would be the one to the north or just left, and then the, the other one to the right. Same size, but only one of those would be synthetic, and the one that is synthetic would have the grandstands and sports lights on it. And then wrapping around kind of to the north side where the track used to be would be home to softball, and there would be a JV and a varsity field, if you will. The varsity field would have two hundred and fifty seats and a miter design around the backside of the, the, the home plate area, and that field would have lights as well. Moving up into the parking lot, we've now achieved just over three hundred spaces, I think it was three oh eight in total. We've got a fieldhouse that orients towards the new parking and the new, what we're calling the Great Lawn, that kind of green space that is in the center of the arrival area that has some slope to it, could be used as a, as a concert area, or continue to be used as a bit of a sledding hill for those kids who, who still continue to use it the way it's been used in the past. Other small buildings that are on site, you'll notice just outside of kind of left-center field of the baseball, we've got a small maintenance building. And then down by softball, we've got a secondary bathroom facility, just acknowledging that it's a longer walk back to the, to the proposed fieldhouse. So with that, I will hand it back to Eric to talk about phasing.
Can I just ask about the softball fields in the preferred orientation?
Field, the second field would be, they're both oriented to the north, to northeast, which is preferred. Probably in a perfect world, want to crank that, that one on the upper side a little bit more to the north, and we'll get a look at that as we get into final design, but I'm trying to put a lot of program in.
I would just like to make sure that we're being as thoughtful with girls' sports as we are with the orientation of fields for boys' sports.
I believe we are. Yeah, I believe we are.
And if we couldn't change that, you could perhaps put the bleachers on the other field that isn't a correct, whichever one's in the most correct orientation. Because Field Two looks like it's pretty close to the correct orientation.
It's very close.
Okay.
Yeah, go.
Has there, has the parking lot to the west of the track and field areas in this picture?
That's not Trinity.
Is that Trinity, it's not those Mormons, it's, that's Trinity School right there, yeah.
Have we ever reached out to them to see if we were to do something like this? Is there some way to share parking so that you'd be able to reach that area?
I think, I think that's something to consider going forward. Right now, they have a real hard challenge with kids coming through the fence, just repairing the fence. So I think there's a relationship there, and I think it's their use, they have their field just to the north too.
Okay.
But right now, it's, it's, they have, had problems with high school students coming over.
Yeah, I'm thinking if we had it well lit and perhaps an actual entrance, maybe we wouldn't have as many of the issues that they're currently having. So something to think about, huh?
Another quick addition, there was some, a lot of talks with bathrooms and concessions and putting locker rooms and things under bleachers. And learning something new, if you add anything underneath the, you know, so you have a grandstand with all this open space, right? So currently, Memorial Field, we have those sheds, which aren't considered usable buildings, it's a storage facility. Bathrooms and concessions and things underneath the bleachers is a building permit, a whole different fire code, it adds thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, aside from the buildings themselves. So the having, having two or three bathroom buildings separate from the bleachers was really the best option financially speaking.
Yeah, you're right, Barbara, that, one, once you put a bathroom structure, which needs to meet the building code, and you integrate it under a bleacher, the entire bleacher
Becomes the building.
becomes part of the building code that would be associated with the, with the bathroom building. A bleacher is a simpler structure that doesn't have to be fire-rated, but a building does, so once you combine them, they both have to be fire-rated.
Jim.
So do you anticipate any issue? Because as I was looking at this, the culvert is on state land, and is there any special requirements, or do you anticipate any issue with having the state give you permission to upgrade that culvert? I can't imagine they would, but...
As we go forward with the design, we're going to try to get the state to pay for it.
Okay.
But it is, it is an important aspect of this project to repair, so we are going to be mindful of that.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions real quick?
Yeah, and just jumping into the phasing again, so the bluish area, we're calling that Phase One of looking what we could and want to construct first. So putting the new track on the bottom right, it's gonna give us the opportunity to raise the grades again, similar to the, the previous, and, and look at the drainage, slightly a different mechanism with, with that structured field there, we can probably put a lot of the stormwater underneath that field. So that would be part of the next phase, evaluating where we can store some more water. And with the grades coming up, those fields would also want to come offline on the bottom left, so that also gives the opportunity to bring those up. The committee brought up a good point as far as construction stage, and so that middle field that will be still natural grass could be utilized to build both, both artificial turf fields, so that was a, a pretty good benefit in that area. And with the track coming offline, gives you the opportunity then to, to build the softball as needed, because that space will be vacated. And, and obviously, part similar to the first one was doing the parking and entrance and access to, to be building the, those pieces out, so that would, the arrival and the sense of arrival is upgraded. And then Phase Two is primarily related to the, the major buildings and the baseball, which aren't critical at this time, but there will need to be some coordination with the track being that close to baseball and the reorientation, so baseball will likely come offline for a, a period of time in between those two phases, unless we can find a temporary measure for that. The, the spacing is just really tight with the, the amount of grade that we do want to come up there. And then the, the resurfacing of tennis and basketball would be probably like a Phase Three or as needed, depending on when these phases would hit, how long those surfaces would last to get you to the, to the final endgame for that one, so.
So this is Concept D. This was the subcommittee recommended, preferred plan that they voted on. Again, the final design and permitting, several point two million dollars. And the phasing, Phase One is a little bit more, because we're kind of touching more of the fields, sort of. of the fields, so to speak. And then phase, you can go through there in different phases. All in right now, that's 31.7 million. That does not include final design and permitting, that is just the construction costs.
What is the driving the cost difference? That's like 4 million more than the other?
Do you want to put the plan back up? The variety of things that drive the cost differential between this, but probably the biggest one is the shift of the track and field from its present location down to kind of the southwest corner of the site. And it requires significantly more fill. And it's always cheaper to build a track and field on top of a track and field now because I can reuse that gravel and subbase that's under there. So once you move it off of that location and put it in a different spot, we lose that value, if you will. So that was the biggest change. Other than that, there've been, we did add the secondary bathroom building down by softball, which, you know, is a big piece of that $4 million delta, that's probably about a million dollars for that building concession down in that general location. So those two things drove most of the cost.
One of the big questions, Pam, around why move the track if it's going to add all that cost to it? And the biggest piece, two things, it was timing and drainage. So if you're doing all this construction at the top of the parcel and the drainage problems are at the bottom, so we're doing all this work, so now you're trying to address two things at once. And so that was part of it, like you should fix the drainage before you start digging up the rest of the... And then the other piece is usability. So the track and the football field are the two parts of that park that have the biggest numbers of kids at one time, hundreds of kids in track and all that. So to have those, a football, you know, the large field and the track done first prevents, minimizes the time that we're without those things. And all in all, when you look at, and this is a conversation we've had a million times with the middle school, yes, we could keep it the way it is and improve it and have a really nice facility, but knowing how sports have grown in 50 years, this layout with a separate stadium for football, a separate stadium for track, practice field in the middle, provides a much, much more flexibility for the different sports that come. You know, who knows when pickleball will be a high school sport, right? We're going to have all the, you just never know. So that, those were, if I remember the conversations, it was those two things. It was the overall drainage issue and how to facilitate fixing it well, and the timing of keeping fields offline.
I think it's important that the large 2,000-seat stadium, we say football, but it's football, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, it's multipurpose, it's not just football.
Right.
So as you look forward, having more sports played on an artificial turf field is important, as well as having that artificial turf field on the track to, which is from a playability point of view.
Jim.
One of the things that, and I'm sure David can talk about it, but one of the things that the public who attended these meetings came up with and influenced this, and we did it, is you'll notice that the bleachers for the large multipurpose field face to the west, and that minimizes noise to the neighborhood and directs it towards empty fields. And that was, that was a point that we took, you know, it was brought to our attention and we took into consideration as the subcommittee. So this layout really is a little more neighborhood-friendly?
And believe it or not, we do get calls yearly about the speakers at Memorial Field during football. That would be helpful from residents of the Rawlins Park neighborhood.
Sarah.
Thank you. It's clear that managing water is such an issue in this property and thinking of the 50-year-old drainage, thinking of the costs associated with improving the drainage. Are there any, is there anything we should be thinking about as far as, like, we're already in a drought? When we do phase one of this project, how are we going to account for the fact, like, there's going to be even more water? That's obviously something you all take into account. How do you do that?
And that would be kind of construction means and methods as far as that goes. If we needed to do some de-watering, that would certainly, to get in certain structures. But bringing in the fill, yeah, I wanted to make sure it's properly compacted as that's all being brought up. When we were doing the studies, it was 2023, so I think it was fairly wet right around that time, too. So the data we have and looking at the soils, you can understand where that seasonal high groundwater is. So that is all taken into account during the drainage design that we'll be looking at.
And does the water table trigger, like, state regulations that you're going to have to, that would presume maybe add cost?
Would, not necessarily. For de-watering, that would potentially trigger some EPA-type permits during construction. For New Hampshire DES with alteration of terrain, that's the primary, the land disturbance permit. For any disturbances over 100,000 square feet. And they're primarily looking at the drainage design and the anti-degradation for erosion and sedimentation control. So that's where that review comes in as well, making sure you have the proper separation to that groundwater for your stormwater systems that are up there.
And right now, we're purposely not going into the wetlands. The wetlands are the blue, the light blue, that's all wetland areas. So it would be a lot more complicated if we were trying to enlarge complex even further.
Thank you.
Brenda.
Am I correct in assuming that this schematic design is the one that you would prefer to have? D is the option of choice, if I could, if you will?
Yep, that's what the subcommittee voted to make this, the recommendation to the school board as well as the city council.
Anyone else?
How are we going to pay for it?
Love that. There's the next step.
So I mean, the, it's always going to come down to money, unfortunately. The 1.2 million is the final design and permitting. The city in this fiscal year, FY '26, did approve the funding for their share. They did not appropriate it. It's in the budget, projects approved, pending, other dollars coming in to match it. So that, that's there where the city is right now. If we funded, when we fund, the final design and permitting, you know, hopefully, my word sooner than later, that there's, you know, a bunch of timelines are coming up. That's a 12-month process. So, you know, say we get all the funding in place by, say, March, that's March of '27, and that, you know, best case, even if you did phase one at some, you know, joint fashion, I mean, you're not looking at construction to, you know, late fall, '27, best case, most likely, spring of '28.
It's going to be a fun time in Concord, New Hampshire.
The fields aren't getting any better. I mean, I had the same, similar presentation to city council on Monday night, we have to go back because they ran late. You know, track's not usable next year for Concord School District. I, that's probably okay for recreational use. Bleachers are going to be the next thing that we'll bring up, and we're going to do an engineering study on that. And then the fields, we said it, it's been a very dry summer and fall, Steve. Probably didn't lose too many games.
Nope. Sometimes you wouldn't know it, though, if you get just a little bit of rain.
Oh, it comes right back.
Yeah.
Comes right back. So, and the other question, Steve and I meeting in a couple of weeks, if this happens or part of this happens, the same time Memorial, the middle school is, middle school has, currently has 10 acres of athletic fields. Some question about what we're going to do about that. But then if this comes offline in some various portions, I think it's going to take a lot of prior planning. And as soon as we can agree where that is, I think the better. And HIA is usually a six months to a year out planning, so if we have to find alternative locations, I think as soon as we can start doing that would be better for everybody.
So the dollar amount the school district needs to agree upon tonight or for this even to start is?
Conversation, the subcommittee's recommendation was 50/50.
Right.
I don't know if that's been a, so that'd be 600,000 each. I don't know if that's the school board's final recommendation or city council's, but the subcommittee, and that's what we carried in this year's budget in FY '26. We originally had it at 1.5 million, the city was carrying 750, but we got the estimate and it's a little bit lower, so it's, it can come down to 600.
So when, I'm sorry, what, quick?
No, just one quick observation.
Yeah, go.
I was at a football game, actually, you were at the same football game, I believe, this past fall, and literally witnessed the bleacher break and a person drop. Now fortunately, when the bleachers break, they only drop about eight to 10 inches, but it was certainly startling to that particular fan. So it was a little scary sitting behind that and seeing it just literally fail right there in second quarter or whatever, so. Just want to point out that there are some compelling issues driving our needs.
Steve and then Pam.
And that's one of my big concerns, is the liability factor to both the city and the district in terms of the current condition of our fields. And we've brought in our USATF officials, representative of New England, who came to inspect the track and received, you know, less than glowing of its current condition. And so, you know, and just in the process now, we just received it Saturday and we cheered with Adam and with David in terms of, we know we're not going to reduce the track moving forward until we do some serious alterations. The only concern is that some of the new that I would have with this pose on terms of the new one is the accessibility piece with regards to where the larger fields, where the larger amounts of student athletes, the larger amounts of parents who are being served and grandparents, we do graduation and things like that. I see the benefit of, if we were able to get parking on the state-owned fields, I think that changes the equation. If we don't know that, now those areas of the Memorial Field park are yet to for grandma going to graduation or for anybody that has ADA concerns. So that would be a major concern, and that's been echoed, you know, to me by voices in the community about that. So if you have any questions about that?
That was a common concern with the public that came, you know, that, the very same word. If grandma's there and she has to use the bathroom, she has to walk all the way back to where the parking lot is. So those things came up. One of the biggest pieces in the parking, buying the state land, the driving force for sort of going ahead without it is that if we wait until we have it, it could be another decade before we can start anything because that, that purchase wouldn't be a quick process either. So the thought would be to build the, you know, if you build it, they will come, so to speak, to build the field that would be the most successful, especially with that parking, with the idea that that could be something down the road.
I just want to jump in because it would not be fair, or would it be just for me not to point out that when that bleacher broke, the city had it replaced before the next weekend game? So they certainly are super responsive, but there's only so much we can expect them to do and to anticipate. And so I didn't in any way want to imply that the city was not doing their due diligence, it's just that it's at the end of its life.
I had a question. Are there any restrictions on naming rights at Memorial Field similar to White Park? I know...
Yep, I mean, I think, I think there's many ways to fund this.
Yep.
The city council in the spring gave me authorization to apply for $500,000 Land of Water Conservation Fund grant. We got notified that we're encouraged to do a formal application. We're really good about getting those grants, knock on wood. I think part of it is going to be, it's land and water conservation. There's no limitations regarding, if you want to call it, the Higgins Stadium for the right financial donation.
With just 10 million, Margaret.
But I, but like, is it, are there deed restrictions? Like, White Park, they called it the Merrimack Lounge instead of the Merrimack Bank because there's deed restrictions.
Correct. There's some in there, but they're not, they're not overwhelming at all.
No, okay.
So it would just be what the term is, you know, is it, I think the main stadium, you can do some, you could probably do something to the baseball track, you could probably do something.
Well, it's more a don't field now.
Correct, but, you know, you put somebody's logo on top of it.
Oh, I see, right, now, yeah, like a bank of New Hampshire.
For the right, you know, so I, I mean, is it going to get you $32 million?
No, 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 no.
From this, Concord, New Hampshire, no.
We could buy it down a little bit.
So I think that's part of it. I didn't mention, you know, the next steps. Part of it is also the final design and permitting is we have to create an operating budget. There is going to be new lights, there's going to be new fields, and there's going to be more bathrooms, there's going to be turn, you know, team rooms. And I think part of that could be, you know, that the revenue aspect is the last line, and that's field rentals.
Yeah.
There's advertising, there's naming. I think, I think all that has to be considered probably before you do construction, you know, to understand, you might not have all the dollars lined up, but I think there's definitely opportunities to bring some non-taxpayers money to the table for something like this.
Well, and I, I think before we get to construction and approving construction, we're going to need an updated MOU on the finances between the city and the school district because, you know...
Oh, yeah.
I think that, a lot of that's going to come.
Yeah.
I think from both sides, that, you know, it's, if, this is, and again, I mean, it's a wonderful joint project, it's unique. You know, most high schools have their own athletic facilities in their backyard. This is a city park that's kind of...
In the backyard of a high school, but it's not ours.
But not really, you know, it's in walking distance. So I think there's a good opportunity to, to improve things across the board and agreement wise, as well as relationships, as well as user.
Jim.
And just for the information here, am I correct that the, some of the covenants or some of the restrictions or requirements of this is that it is available to the community for 50% of the time?
Yes, this, the whole parcel is land and water conservation funds over the years since in 66, 67, the city's been very good about getting federal dollars. All of our parks have federal dollars in it, land and water conservation funds, and that has to, one of the caveats, it has to be public recreation for life. So it has to be public, it has to be used by the public, that's not a school. You know, it's, you know, how does, you know, the tennis players get in there? How do other users get to use it? And that's a little different than most school facilities. Most school facilities during the school day, it's just school only. Afterwards, the sports, it's just school only. There's very little community use a lot of the time. So that is one of the land and water conservation requirements.
Which lends itself very smoothly into the who pays for what piece. So as Dave was saying in the beginning of the meeting, we've had decades where the city and the school did not agree on who should pay for what and who uses what, but the bottom line is, school students, our athletes, use those fields more than anybody else. Yes, they all live in Concord, for the most part. So before any of these questions can be answered, before we can even begin to ask new questions, we have to get the process started, which is approving the 1.2 million final design and permitting process. So the recommendation from the board was that it be a 50/50 split. And I know that this is still contentious among people. We don't own it, so why do we, why are we paying half? Or we use way more than half, so why would the city have to pay for our use? You know, back and forth and back and forth. But the bottom line is, these meetings, and I think Jim can vouch for this, have been fantastic. A very, very good, not only the committee, but the public, members of public that came, really truly seeing the big picture on both sides of it. And it's, it's my feeling that as a committee, we should recommend, that the City and Community Relations Committee should recommend to the full board that we approve this beginning piece, that, that we approve the 50/50 split of these funds. And I always love asking people for money. But nothing can start until this first phase is approved and can move forward. And given the timing of the middle school and the field sharing that's going to disappear or become very creative, you know, is there any commentary or, you know, on that? Brenda?
I know Jack isn't here. Have we discussed this with him at all? Do we have?
Well, he comes to, he comes to all the meetings, yeah.
He's been coming to the meetings and he's all, he...
You know, Jack, he goes to everything.
Yes.
He thinks that we could make this work within our budget?
Miss, I'll let, I'm not going to speak for Mr. Dunn, but Mr. Dunn did attend the majority of the meetings of the subcommittee. And the other, the only thing I'll add is that I was, and Mr. Gill and Ms. Higgins can comment on this, I was very impressed with the attendance of the public that would come to all of these meetings. We, I don't think we had a single meeting that didn't have public people who were wanting to speak and were allowed to speak and contribute.
And in a sort of surprising turn of events, it wasn't just families with kids, it was a lot of longtime Concord residents who very much supported the project and wanted to see the field, you know, repaired and made usable. It was, it was an interesting dichotomy to how sometimes members of the public can be against improving schools and things like this. It was, yeah, it was a surprise to me. It was, yeah, it was a surprise to me, quite honestly. Betty Holy wasn't there, which might be why.
Wasn't 100% in support of moving forward, but I was also impressed that it wasn't just athletes and families. It was community members that were there.
Right, right, exactly.
And I think one of the hats off to the subcommittee and these guys, too, is understanding Concord needs to do this in phases. We're not going, even if it wasn't the middle school, and even if it wasn't the police station, we're not doing a $30 million park. So I think, you know, as we go into that final design and permitting, is what is that reasonable phased approach? And how can we offset that with other dollars? And how we get that done, I think is important to go forward. And again, if you look at the Field House, which is Phase Two A of this phase, I mean, that's almost $6 million. That's almost a clubhouse, the golf course. And so, do the students deserve it? Yes, I mean, it's not gonna be the first thing that we're gonna do. So I think we have to be mindful of what that total dollars is, and how do we do it in phases? Be my recommendation. Unless somebody donates a lot of money, then I think it's, we have to be mindful of that.
Well, and the progress in one phase is a huge determinant of what the next phase will cost. And so, we tried to think in big terms, like, let's say it's gonna cost this much, but if this works out better, then it may be less expensive in Phase Two and Phase Three. We talked a bit about that as well. Always keeping the wallet in mind.
So we do have all the minutes, we do have all the videos, Concord TV was there for the two public meetings. Everything is online on the city's website. There's PowerPoints on it already. So, trying to be open and honest with everybody as possible regarding the hard conversations going forward. But time is now.
Yes.
The only thing we haven't mentioned tonight, and we did speak about it in the subcommittee quite a bit, would be, you know, with the turf fields as well as the others, the ability to get a long, a much further extended season of having people on this, and the ability to host money-raising events or tournaments. Both the city and the school would be interested in doing that. Concord at one time hosted a lot of, you know, state tournaments and championships, and this would allow us to bring in some revenue that way for both the city and the school.
And it isn't even just high school tournaments, you know, youth soccer, those, there can be jamborees with hundreds and hundreds of kids that we don't have a facility to host. And with a dedicated turf field, stadium-style, my goodness, that would be big money all summer. Those things are everywhere but here right now. So, you know, revenue-seeking is always the other side of it. So I would, I would encourage committee members, but actually just anyone here, you know, our next step is to do what the city council has done, which is to approve this first phase so we can get this started, and we have to have a discussion on, you know-
Are you making your motion tonight?
Well, I can, and then we come to the board, the committee comes to the board with discussion and to accept, you know, move to accept what we approve or don't approve here. So as committee members, I mean, we all, I think we all-
I guess I'm not sure what, what we're looking for tonight.
So, well, what we're looking for, actually, in a perfect world, is I would move that the school board accepts the 50/50 price sharing of Phase One, and, you know, and approves $600,000 toward Phase One of Memorial Field, Master Plan Concept D. That would be my ideal. I'm just asking for feedback, do we all feel comfortable doing that? Which would then create a conversation at the board. And then, and then make sure board members ahead of time really read through all of this. So I'm just, that would be my motion.
That we, go ahead.
So are you making that?
I am making that one. I'm making it.
Second.
Second. All right, now, is there any discussion on the motion?
I can't vote, we can't vote on it.
No, you can't vote, but I'm willing to have discussion.
No, no, I mean, I think this is an important full board discussion.
Yes, exactly, so-
And so we'll have to move it to the full board.
This would be a recommendation to the full board.
Yes, yes. Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. Motion passes. So, we will, we will do at our next board meeting is share all of this with the full board and have a discussion, hopefully public input, to see that the full board approves the same.
I did give Jack the PowerPoint, so.
Yeah, he's, and he's the one, too, finance-wise, he really can answer a lot of questions. Who had a, you were asking a question, so I'll chase him down, Brenda, for that.
And in the meantime, I would say, look, let's get our grant people on it and see if you have any school athletic field grants that are out in the wind that we aren't aware of, and maybe could use towards it at all.
And the other thing is on the 24th, we're going back to city council to finish this presentation, because they ran out of time at 11 o'clock, and they were coming back to finish the last five minutes for the 24th, so.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, so that sort of wraps up the Memorial Field piece. I had also put on our agenda for Mr. Gill to explain a little bit about what the R-PAC is, which is the committee that I've been on, it's a citywide recreation committee. However, we've had a lot of information, so it doesn't have to be a big, long, giant. But I know that I didn't even know what it was, and I've lived here forever.
Sure. The Recreation Park Advisory Committee is appointed by city council. It's similar to a city council, it has a ward member from every ward. So it is the only other city committee that has representatives from each ward. And their goal is to help look at capital improvements. We have a capital improvement plan, 10-year plan for every park, so that's 27 plans. They recommend funding of what can get funded, and, you know, they always, you know, have a healthy conversation. They're also involved in our planning, like Ward Two doesn't have a city park right now. So, you know, that's a Penn and Cook Ward, it's growing. We're looking at trying to have land, on the heights, we only have one park, that's Keach Park, but there's a lot of growth coming up on the heights, so how do we get ahead of that conversation? We also, it's Parks, Recreation and Cemetery, so we have cemeteries under Parks and Rec, cemetery land. We are required by law to have cemeteries. We're in the process of looking for cemetery land. We have 25 to 30 years left at the current burial rate, but we need to get ahead of some of those conversations. And then we also bring them items like, when we renamed Warren Dome Field, they were part of the Dome Diamond aspect and stuff, so they're a good group.
As a board member, what stuck out for me was that it's easy for us as school board members to only think about athletic fields or parks, like the things that matter to us as, you know, what the schools would use. And the hours and hours and hours that Parks and Rec puts into all manner of things related to open space. There's federal guidelines on how, based on the population of your city, and the size of your city, and the acreage, how many of those acres need to be parks, and playing fields, and things like that. The other thing I really liked is unbelievably well-attended attendance-wise. I mean, we typically have 100% attendance at those meetings. Wide variety of ideas on what we all should do. But I just feel that it would be, it's a committee that I would encourage school board members to go sometime and sit and listen. You were on it, right?
No, I wasn't.
I don't know who else did it.
I was not on it.
I don't know who did it before me, but-
I'm trying to think, I don't know. For a while there, we don't think we had a representative.
Yeah.
And I think it's important that we, that the school board does participate in this particular, and very important, committee.
Well, and what the city might also know is the city and the schools have so many sort of, if you do this for me, you know, I'll do this for you. So we share facilities, and we share fields, and transportation, and all of those things. So really, one can't function as well as they do without the other. So it's not, it's not like, like it can stay separate.
We also have representatives from Merrimack Valley. So if they use Roll Park and stuff, so it's, it's a good melting pot of-
But if you've never been, one of those meetings go.
I've been, and I'm so impressed by the, and the level of engagement from the committee members is really astounding. So is it R-PAC? I see, are Ward 10 R-PAC members out there doing like flower planting and stuff like that? Is that under their function at R-PAC?
Anybody who'd like to volunteer can do, they can volunteer. It's not, it's not in the bylaws that they're supposed to do community service.
People are donating a tremendous amount of time to beautify our city, and it's appreciated.
The one cool thing about it is every ward has a person, and they're involved. And it's not all people with kids, they're senior citizens, there's people with families with no kids. But they're very involved in the wards, which is, that feedback is good, because you need to have that. They notice things that I don't notice sometimes when I go to a park, so that's important.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Is that good enough, Barbara?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gill.
I had, and maybe this is for R-PAC consideration, but, and it may not be possible with timing and stuff, but there was a snow day, I mean, probably two years ago, that I was out in White Park, and the kids were sledding, and the pond was there, and the skate house was closed. And is there a way to open the skate? I, it has such limited hours to begin with, and to open the skate house-
Let's get a Ward Five R-PAC volunteer to go up there and sit.
Schools are closed.
It is a staffing issue. It's permanent, part-time, part-time staffing opens that, so. A lot of our part-time staff are also, believe it or not, parents. So a lot of times when school's out, they stay home and readjust, so. But I can definitely bring that back to them to say, hey, how can we-
That actually would be a great conversation.
It'd be great, like, the park is used so much on snow days, and then it's like that beautiful new building is closed, and kids are running into my house, case the bathroom, so.
I think we're all funded to open it 24 hours a week or something, and that's definitely not good enough.
Yeah, but there are so many cooperative opportunities. In my ward, in my area, the Beaver Meadow School sits right next to one of the parks. You know, there's the elementary school children there, and there are everyone playing pickleball that are there. And we share entrances and parking and access. And so there's a tremendous amount of opportunity that we can interact and work with each other for the veteran of the community and the school district, in my opinion.
And the city-school agreement, even though it's old, 2001-ish, you know, I think the intent of that agreement is still there. I mean, we use the school gyms for our basketball program, we use a school bus for during the summer camps. You guys use athletic fields, or a field in White Park and stuff. So I think the intent of that agreement is still there. I think part of it was, back then, we didn't wanna get into the dollars of who's getting the best value. And I think if we, as we relook at that, we probably have to, you know, bring it up to date a little bit. But the intent of that agreement is still, 100% still there in my mind.
And the bottom line is, it's all coming from the same pockets, so.
Right.
And it's all our neighborhoods.
It's all our neighborhoods. It's our city, our neighborhoods, our community.
Yeah. Another really difficult issue for R-PAC lately has been Healy Park along the river, with our unhoused situation and all that was going on there. Hours and hours of discussion and conversation around those aspects. We had to talk about AEDs, and can we have AEDs in parks? Like, you know, you can have such a narrow idea of what it is Parks and Rec means, and it's just a lot of things, so, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that. That's all good. Well, thank you.
Right.
If you have any other questions, let me know. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn? No move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. David Gill, thank you.
David Gill, Barbara Higgins, you're welcome.